I used to. Uh, I, I just don't go because. I don't need to either. It's just a bunch of people, drunk people and I don't need that. Yeah. I mean, I get to see a lot of people, old friends, but. I can see them on Facebook.
Did you hear me?
Hello Trevor. Hi Trevor, welcome.
Okay, I got your very.
Very quick. Just a little matter of the protocol with EJ Bell and Trevor Dersky are off the telephone tonight. Then we have council members David Fisher, Samantha Peterson and Jim Kane are in chambers. We also have Al Buck and Michael Fritz, Solen Lang. Where do you want me to take away? For this meeting tonight, we do have, I'll call it need to order, but this meeting tonight we do have some items of business to take care of first, I think we'll get those out of the way and then. So we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance, all rise.
A pledge of allegiance is with the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business this evening is approve the agenda. Motion by council. Second.
All second.
A motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, begin by the roll call vote, David Fisher.
Present.
And EJ Bell.
Present.
Is the roll call or the vote on the agenda?
This is all the roll call, is it?
No.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just proceed with the vote and call that the roll, okay?
Yeah.
Trevor Dersky. For the agenda.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Jim Kane.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you folks. Item number three is motion to approve a five day special Class C retail alcohol license for water nowadays. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, any further discussion? This is our typical annual license for beer sales. Okay, hearing none, the roll call vote, David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Hear an aye there, Jim Kane.
Aye.
Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Next item is a motion to approve the list of bills for approval. Then a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
All second.
May I clarify my.
Just a minute.
I had had a inquiry about one of the items on the list of bills and I just wanted to share publicly just the rest of the information about that. It was a $4,700 train to access systems, which is our IT provider for a water plant printer. And I understand that that looks high and it was questioned in-house. So we have a multifunctional printer, it's a printer that not only acts as a copier and a printer and all those things, but it is a scanner and it scans to email. And it's hooked to our infrastructure of our IT system that is supported by access systems. And this particular multifunctional printer is located at the water plant. And I think some of you know we had some issues with the plant being struck by lightning and having some electrical issues as a result of that. This was one of those that we had it analyzed and the technicians determined that it was in fact damaged by a lightning strike in Lake May. We've been working with access systems, this is a leased printer and we have an existing lease on the equipment, so we don't own it. We were required to insure it and we ultimately decided to have the printer replaced and file an insurance claim with it. So we have received, out of that $4,700, we've received from insurance $2,200. So you know, net it's at $2,500, which is the amount of our deductible with our insurance company. What we, we did look into, you know, kind of cheaper off the shelf Walmart printer really and, and the cost of both the printer and the supplies. And compared that to this leased printer. And because of the arrangement we're in with the lease, we were going to have to continue to pay out the lease and not have a printer to replace, to turn back in at the end of the lease. And so at the end of the day, this was the most cost effective and operationally beneficial option. The other thing when we buy one off the shelf is it can't be supported then by our vendor, our IT vendor. And we've had some really significant benefits of having IT managed outside of the office. So, so that's the payment on here and then I just mentioned the support at least is $45 a month. So I should let it clarify that kind of odd item on this week's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, hearing none, proceeding to the roll call vote, David Fisher.
Aye.
EJ Bell.
Aye.
Trevor Dersky.
Aye.
Hear the aye, Jim Kane.
Aye.
And Samantha Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you everyone. Okay, moving on to item number five, special Solen Lang architects, fire station rego architect and project. Or the design, so this time we'll begin with that discussion and. Sandy, is there any introduction or?
No, I'll turn over now.
Okay, Al Buck then.
All right, just piggybacking on last week's discussion, so we brought four different documents here. So the first document is a cost opinion from Snyder and Associates, this is for all the site and civil work. Second, eight and a half by 11 sheet is the Solen Lang opinion of probable cost updated to include the revised cost opinion from Snyder and Associates for the site improvements. And then out of the 11 by 17, the one with all the colors on it, that's from Snyder and Associates. That is the revised site plan for our discussions and we'll drill down into all these things, I just want to give an overview. And it's color coded with some cost savings ideas. And then the fourth sheet is also an 11 by 17 and that's some Solen Lang modifications to the Snyder and Associates layout to try to further the cost savings. So with that, I'll just kind of jump back to the, to the front here.
Yeah, just a matter of, are Trevor and EJ able to see these?
Yes, they have provided those.
Are you guys, do you guys have any questions, Trevor and EJ?
I'm just, I'm just kind of looking over them now.
Okay.
I've got them, so I'm following up.
Okay, great. So I'm going to go back to the Snyder and Associates cost opinion, that was that first document. So it's the eight and a half by 11 with Snyder's logo at the top. And kind of just jumping ahead to the, the bottom line here, about two thirds of the way down the page, they have a base bid construction total of 614,479 and 95 cents. So that is their updated cost opinion to go with the site plan that has the multiple colors on it. And I'll get how that ties in in a second here. And then below that, down at the very bottom of the page, is a number for 519,057 and 45 cents. So that would be base bid minus the deduct alternates or subtracting out the colored items on their site plan. And then for framework reference. What that does to the overall cost opinion, that's the Solen Lang cost opinion. So we plugged in the $614,000 base bid number into that. And unfortunately that was about 200,000 or so higher than, than the number we were carrying previously. So that does bring our current project total up from the 5.1 that we were discussing to 5.367 million. That is with their higher numbers, so they also have those deduct alternates that are about $100,000 less. That would bring that number down by about $100,000. So that would bring it back down to the, back down to like a 5.27, so. So I just wanted to set that as framework, so you know, out of the discussions from last week. You know, there, there is a net increase in, in total area paved and so that results in a net increase in the, in the cost of where we're at. So that I can go through the.
Yeah.
Oh yes, go ahead.
Clarify, what does this include, does this include all of the options on the front page or like what in the estimate up here?
Sure. So the estimate is, it correlates to the, to the drawing that has the multiple colors on it. So it does, that, that first number, that 614,000, does include the return drive from Third Avenue. It includes the new sidewalk down Second Avenue. You know, it kind of includes everything that you see there, it includes the.
I got it.
Yeah, the four parking spots off of the exit apron, it colored in green. So that.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, just to, just to make sure we all understand that part, this new dollar amount is not directly comparable to the option B. We have a slightly different design with the return apron included, what previously it was, it was kind of a deduct.
Right, right.
And so is it still going to, going to be bid as an option?
The return apron from Third Ave?
Yes.
Yes, that's how we're, we're setting up the design.
As a deductor as may have.
I think to be consistent, we'll, we'll have it as a deduct since everything else is a deduct.
Yes it is.
Yeah, I think, so some of the discussion is, do we, yeah, do we include the, the return apron at all in the design? I think the benefit of at least bidding it and getting a number lets you know, you know, where, where it is. Even if you don't elect to do it now, it at least gives you a starting point, you know, if you wanted to try to set funds aside and, and do that at a later date. It gives you a good, it's a data point that doesn't cost you anything to obtain and it's already been designed, so it seems like it's worthwhile information. And, and yeah, Trevor, I think to circle back to your point, our cost opinion previously, the, the 5.1 million was without the return apron from Third Avenue. And our cost opinion with the return apron was more like 5.4 billion. So actually in the, in the grand scheme of things, if you take all the add alternates site wise, shown on the diagram and in multi-color, were actually slightly better than our previous cost opinion. So I think Solen Lang is probably overvaluing the cost of the return apron, but maybe, you know, we didn't know about all the kind of additional paving.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that understanding, so thank you.
Yeah, oh, you're glad for the questions. So I just kind of wanted to set the framework from a dollars and cents standpoint. You know, right now we're sitting a little bit higher base bid than we were, but, but the total would still be at or slightly below our previous cost opinion. Are there any questions on that?
Do you know how much the return apron makes up of the 614?
Yeah, so.
Do that on my.
Yeah, and I can kind of walk through this diagram and then it correlates. Should I color code this? Yeah, so, so the, the colors on the site plan actually do also line up with the, the deducts shown on Snyder's cost opinion. So I'll just kind of step through the drawing and then tie it back to the cost if that, if that works for you. So on the drawing, they have a kind of a rectangular box that says deduct alternates, then it has colors next to it. So the first deduct alternate is the Second Avenue sidewalk, that's in red. And that, the purpose of that is to connect pedestrians to the fire station, although I would say we need a little bit of connection to get us to the front door, but that's, that's kind of a minor detail. But they broke that out separately, so if you look at line, line item 30, that's a, that sidewalk is a $5,500 deduct, you elect not to do that. So that gives you value there. Then the second deduct alternate is the Third Avenue access drop box relocation. So the reason these are tied together is basically if we don't do the Third Avenue connection, my understanding is that Snyder would advocate that you remove the island to facilitate the reentry of fire apparatus from Third Avenue through the existing parking lot. So it's kind of, those two are tied, those two items are tied together. And then there's also some, that also relates to the orange color, which is also tied to helping make sure we can get the fire trucks through. So it's removing an existing curb and striping it and then also retracting some existing, or retracting some paving, just to help with the truck turning radius, radii. So that all told comes to $47,322. So the Third Avenue really connection really is about a $50,000 item and not the 300, $2 to $300,000 item that we get initially assessed it to be, so that's good news. The third deduct alternate is the Third Avenue parking, so that's color coded green. That is the four spots that are shown coming off of the exit apron. Adjacent to, well it's labeled Third Avenue, but that's really Second Avenue. So apologies, correction there. Oh, it says Third Avenue on the drawing.
Oh.
Anywho, it's green and it's to the right of the page. And that is, those four parking stalls, they're estimating at about 9,000, 9,200 or 9,300 dollars. I can tell you from my experience, and unfortunately we didn't get time to kind of go over this with Snyder, but I, I would advocate to not pave those stalls at all. I think that causes a, it causes a, a conflict with volunteer firefighters responding to a call, coming in and trying to find a parking spot at the same time as apparatus leaving. So we had talked about trying to get some extra parking there and Snyder initially was trying to make it work longer in the north-south direction. And then they said it just didn't quite work there, so they tried turning it, but unfortunately I would highly advise not doing that.
That's going to cut in and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I can tell you right now, you don't want to do that, so that saves you about $9,300. And then deduct number four is the blue, it's maintain existing. Who knows his? Third Avenue, but I think it's really Second Avenue pavement. So that is, the blue area represents leaving that existing drive and then just paving either side of it to get the parking that's shown there. And that, that is a net, now that is leaving the existing six inch paving in lieu of replacing with eight inch paving and eight inches more capable to withstand the fire truck traffic. That is a deduct of about $33,338.
So the way you have this binder, the, we'll get bid on all of it and then be able to take these off as deducts rather than alternate the other way, right?
Right, so the, the drawings have been set up and I think what we want to do, you know, you, I think deducts are a great way to, to find out where you are bid wise, but we don't want to, I don't think we would present all four of these items in the bid drawings as deducts. I think part of this is informational for us to make decisions on what we definitely do want to include or definitely don't want to include. With the exception of the, the Third Avenue return being, you know, the largest ticket item. That makes for a good deduct alternate because that, that's noteworthy. Things like, you know, $5,000 for the sidewalk and like I said, the $10,000 for the, for the, those four parking stalls that I wouldn't take, I would just take that off the table right now.
On this yellow, if we, the yellow is the Third Avenue return. That means the drop box goes away if we do that. If we don't do that, then the drop box has to go away, right? That's part of, that's all part of the same, that yellow. And you've got 2,000 in there for relocation, but where, where is the relocation for that drop box?
I think that's kind of.
Up in the air.
Yeah, up for buying too.
See, that, again. That's one of the problems I have with things like this because it's up in the air, but those are the little things that are really going to give a bad perception out to the public if, if it's done and they don't like what it's done and they don't, because that's one of the things we said, they're used to that drop box right there and I understand it makes perfect sense, you're not going to be able to get the trucks around there. And all of the curbing, what about the island, even that? I'm, I'm questioning, you know, leaving the curbing out there because that's still going to give you some maneuverability issues with those brake trucks coming in and out, especially in winter time if we have snow or, you know, if they try to run plows and stuff, depends on how they're plowing, but one of the real problems is we've got the same people running the snow plows or to run the fire trucks and you can't do both at the same time, so.
True.
So the original plan showed the drop box and put drop box under the oning next to the building, correct?
Correct, yeah, it showed it on the, I guess, north.
Kind of here somewhere.
Yeah.
And, and I think to your point, Jim, you know, I think our goal tonight, I'm going to say this isn't done baking in the oven yet.
Right, right.
This isn't fully baked.
Yeah.
But we're just kind of looking to get, you know.
Understand, yeah.
More direction from you than.
That's, that's the other problem that I have with this, okay, so we're still moving, we've already lost three months. We could have gone out for bid in May, we're already three months behind, now we're looking at even if we get this in September, these firemen are going to be running through that where they are now through the winter.
Yeah, I mean.
And, you know, at least until late winter and early spring, whereas we should have been able to move this in May, they'd be in before the snow flies. That's what I'm getting feedback from the firemen.
Right, right.
We, we dealt with this for three winters now and we're not happy about dealing with it again. I've reached out, the last meeting, they said they wanted fireman input. I said I didn't think it was going to happen, I've reached out to six firemen on my own and I get the same thing from every one of them. We're done, four years, we give our input, the plan is our plan, you're going to change it, we will use what you give us.
Yeah.
Until we don't use it anymore.
Right. Our goal is, you know, our goal is still to try to get final CDs ready, ready for the beginning of September, so I think unfortunately.
Let's push it.
I think we're going to need one more of these meetings probably to, you know, have our kind of final plans.
Talk about schedule before we end tonight.
Yeah, yeah, so I apologize and need probably a little more of your time, but one week wasn't quite enough to really get.
No, I, I've been in too many engineering projects, like I, I, right away I says, you know, that's a tight schedule to try to get civil engineering, electronic engineering, it gets even worse when you start dealing with software issues and things that come up during the, the planning stages that you don't properly anticipate and you can't.
Right.
But, you know, and then, and like I said, this drop box for the library and for the bills is a piddly little thing, but.
But it's important.
Well, to, to some people in town, that's their only thing that they use in this whole thing, so to them it's a big deal, until they have a heart attack and the firemen don't show up. Then that's a big thing.
So how the, the island that's not colored, that would remain as it is with the curbing, that would be the.
In the, the center island that they need to alter against.
Why it really still remains?
Remains as is, that's.
That's, that's another thing that I don't like because of that curbing out there and that pole, you know, that's right in the middle there. And without that, we'd have a lot more maneuverability for the trucks if they're going to have to wind through there.
Right. So what, what they're showing, that orange area basically would, would remove the curb, you know, drop that island down to.
Just, just that part of it though, not the whole thing.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's just the little. And then, and then that's going to help, but if you're coming in from, from Third Avenue and coming down there in front and around there. It's possible, it's just difficult.
Right. And then the one thing, if we want to go to the fourth sheet, I'll just kind of touch on that quickly. So this, I'll fully admit is my kind of awful doodle, so bear with me, but it was really the only modifications are to, like I said, eliminate those four parking spaces off of the exit apron. And then it was an attempt to try to just utilize the Second Avenue entry as is and then extend paving off of that to the north and the south instead of kind of reconnoitering the, the whole approach there. It does put the sidewalk tight. It does put the sidewalk tight to the building, but I, I believe it could work. We unfortunately did this like late at the end of the, after five yesterday and sent it over to Snyder and they haven't had a chance to respond to it today yet. So. I'm not even a hundred percent sure this is feasible, but it was just more effort to try to take some, reduce the paving and take a little more cost out of that, uh, Second Avenue entry. It does result in a few less stalls, about three less stalls, but that would still provide, um, for the firefighters would give them eighteen stalls total. So I think the direction, you know, we're looking for tonight is to know, you know, we're generally on the right path and what kind of tweaks you'd like to take back. Uh, to Snyder, Nick wasn't able to make it tonight. I think he's out of town. Sammy, to circle back around to your question about the deduct alternate. So we're still planning on, uh, deduct alternate for the brick along the south face. Deduct alternate to go from glass overhead doors to the insulated over doors. Uh, deduct alternate for, um, finishing out the mezzanine into the dorm rooms. And then a deduct alternate for the third half return apron.
And all those deduct alternates are included in this cost estimate of five point.
Besides the return.
Besides.
The returns.
Return is included in this, but the others are not. The last door is the mezzanine build out.
Yep. I've been deducted from the five point three six seven. So if we took the Third Avenue one out just by itself, that would drop in another forty-seven thousand. So it'd be five point three, uh, five point three two million.
So you'll have, you'll have adds and deducts or?
No, we wanna, we wanna make sure it's just deducts. So, um.
Would you have to include the glass doors and the mezzanine build out then in the?
As well as asking, I think the option B took those deducts.
Yes, it did. So are we eliminating those entirely or do we just still have them in the drawings and get numbers for them? Which again, I would have.
Option. I don't, I don't think we had those options, alternates or deducts. I think the option B or C.
I think option B took those first three, the south brick, the overhead doors and the mezzanine build out completely out.
Okay. I mean, I, again, I would advise, it's already, you've already paid for the design. It doesn't cost you a dime to bid, get a number and know what that is. Even if you're not gonna take it, you still at least have an idea of what that cost would be if you were to do it in the future. So at this point I would just advise you to leave it in and get the number because it doesn't, it doesn't hurt you and you get that, that feedback and you know what that potential cost could be. I mean, we're happy to do whatever you like, but it seems like.
So you have to update this cost opinion to include those. The mezzanine build out, the, so that. So this number would be much higher to start with.
It would, it would be for the base, base bid. Right.
Yeah. At some point we'd have to go back to those, so the council's clear on what we're bidding and then what's being offered as options.
Correct. Correct.
On bidding, what's the menu look like?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think once we fine tune what we're doing with the site, then, then we can easily do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I get that. I think that's. An e- easy thing. It's just some clear understanding, you know, having it, seeing it all together. It is a little confusing because the numbers are kind of moving around now.
Yeah, it's, right now with all the Kennedy site options, it's, it, it is a moving target until we kind of can solidify on that and then we can re, restate those. Those deduct alternates.
Is it? I'm sure that. The contractors, they're used to this process of the, with the deducts, right? Last meeting, I think we had a conversation that, you know, we really want to put out there what, what we want. So does, with adding these three deducts or alternates back in, does that? Does that kind of contradict what we were talking about last meeting or, or are the contractors used to, used to that? I mean, is that gonna confuse?
Right. That's a fair question and I think it's a fine line. I think you want to stay, you know, I feel comfortable with four deduct alternates. I wouldn't want to get it. I mean, six would really be pushing. You definitely don't want to get beyond that, you know, I mean, as long as it's a handful, um, that's, that's, they're used to that, you know, we do that on every, really every bid job we build. Typically we stylistically do alternates so that the base bid is the lowest number that we usually add alternates on because they typically signify. Things that are wants instead of needs. Um, here we discussed kind of shooting for the moon and going all in and then having deducts to work us back down. It's really semantics, but I just want to be consistent one way or the other. So, so far we've set this project up with deducts.
We could go the other way.
Is it a problem to go the other way?
No, we could easily do it the other way. I mean, that's just.
Prodo really cheap and then you add on.
Right.
Six and a half and that's the other. You've got the blocks.
Yeah. The important thing is just to go in order of, you know, importance because you can't, you can't bounce around. You can't pick and choose which alternates you take. You should take them in order.
Like. You have potential to violate the open bidding process, the public bidding process because you did literally have a different low bidder based on the order within which you take the ads.
Right.
I would absolutely say that we have to prioritize.
Yes.
We had to be the same with our deducts. We prioritize them likewise.
Correct. Which so far the, you know, the most important optional item, uh, is the Third Avenue return apron.
And that's the one they want the worst.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, I mean, that's, that's the one that's functional, but gives them what they asked for at the very beginning and have been asking for it for four years now because of the problems they had. With now and with their other ones getting that, getting a drive-through in there. How, how, I forgot. How, why is that building from door to door?
It's eighty feet deep.
Eighty feet. So we do have to.
Right.
Those three, we could, we could potentially put a third truck or three more trucks or smaller, anything smaller than our, and you put a forty, that's getting kind of nasty, but you could put a, another twenty or. I know a lot of these, that's one of the things that I really liked about that. He put a lot of these fire departments now are going to the ATVs and UTVs for emergencies and for access out to areas.
Brush fires.
We're gonna, yeah, well, that and not only for, uh, say, you know, you have an emergency out there, brush fires, they use it, but also if you've got, uh, like a trapped farmer out in the middle of a field on a. Tractor or something like that where it's difficult to get at with the trucks between, you know, at least get a couple of people out there and.
I wonder, I wonder if, um, the council should entertain if they want all four of these. They included. I wonder about the south brick and the overhead doors. I mean, I think the overhead doors, I mean, even, you know, council on the painting you even talked about, the insulated doors, which is the, the window doors, that maybe that's an option they would like to take for now, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can pretty much dump the glass doors honestly.
I see you turn it into an add.
Right.
And really do, because I think that I, what I hear from the council is that an interest in a good bid day.
Right.
Which means you're, you don't want a bid price that's high and then you're trying to chop away at it. You want a bid price that's low, that may be low enough that then you felt comfortable adding some options that they're not comfortable with today based on price.
Right.
So I, just kind of how we've been talking about it, I almost feel like the council's gonna be more comfortable if you flip it around and. And maybe make some decisions about, you know, some of the stuff you have here, obviously.
Right.
But even the alternates.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, that's a, I mean, certainly it's the council, but that's how you've been talking about it. And I think when we talk about the option A, B, C, that's certainly how we turned it around was to say.
Minimal.
What are we asking for? And then, yep. I mean, I agree that you're, you get one shot at all of bid prices. So, um, you might as well see what they would put on paper, but only for the big things in my opinion.
Right. The things that you.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, by all means.
I have, having trouble understanding, why are we, why are we talking about adding back in the mezzanine?
Yeah, I think.
And, and are we talking about that?
I think we have already took, or, um, at least in my mind, we had already decided not to do the south wall brick, the glass doors and the mezzanine. And then Sammy, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Trevor, but I, I agree in my mind, if we were going for that lowest option and then depending on when the, how bids come in, then we would add, it'd be like an add alternate versus the deduct. The return apron to Third Avenue, but I think where you're going with this, Trevor, I think we had already sort of decided to not entertain those other three. I mean, I'm.
When we did the resolution that we were gonna come in here and we were gonna discuss options to actually reduce as well. But we got told last week that that wasn't gonna happen. I was a no on five point one million. I'm still a no on five point whatever. This is the reason, you know, that resolution, the wor, the way it was presented to the council and to everybody in town was. We're gonna go in and we're gonna discuss all the options and we can potentially reduce things to where it's palatable for everybody. That's not what we did here. What we've done here is just looked at add-ons since we've been here. And. So. When the discussion was, we're tearing ourselves apart as a council and we're, we need five votes in order to do it. This is the reason why we don't get the five votes. Because you give the perception to some council members that what we're trying to do here is reduce the overall cost and that's not been the fact. What all we've done is tried to increase it since we started. So I'm still over at a five point one. I do have some other questions about some other things tonight, but, um, as far as I'm concerned, um. I've been kind of wasting my time here as a council member because what I thought we could talk about, we had no plans of doing from the beginning. So. And words, words, words without meaning, words without meaning are just words.
But I would say the resolution was, was not as you described.
I would agree with you. He come up with that idea on his own and we discussed it, the resolution. The whole idea was to try to get something that we could get engineered by September and cutting the cost to that level was going to force us into engineering time that was going to lose this construction season. That was my feeling on that. It, both. EJ and Fisher were totally into this low number that something under five, four, five million dollars, and that's literally impossible without a complete redesign. And we're looking at six to twelve months more time before we can go to bid.
That's all it is. It's already just a blueprint. That's the thing. It's just design.
Our contract amendment was to redesign the site to get the building minus AP.
The same resolution is discussed. Whether. It was met that way. It sure was perceived that way.
You've had a problem with perception ever since you got on.
Yeah, I know that you're fucking idiot the whole time.
Um, I just, for my part, I want to clarify, um, to the extent that we have bids come back cheaper than we, than we think or cheaper than this estimate, I'm looking at that going one direction and that's in the direction of trying to get additional council members onboard. And so I'm, I can't entertain, I can't see, uh, an option where I'm adding. Items back and, and other council members may or may not disagree that we've, we've actually worked and spent a lot of hours, uh, a lot of us. Working towards getting this number where more people are comfortable with it. I'm not gonna give up ground on that. To the extent bids come in and, and in a better position, that's the direction it goes for me is getting more people onboard. Does that, does that make sense? Just wanted to make sure.
So are you, are you saying, Trevor, just.
My decision kind of cleared.
Not, not entertain those other, those three, the glass doors, mezzanine, because we had already. I, that's how I understood it too. We'd already kind of moved on from those three and the only addition that we were still, um. You know, didn't know what, which way we're gonna go on is the, the drive-through to Third Avenue, but I think we had kind of moved on from those others.
My understanding of the resolution.
Right.
To Trevor's point, I don't think we're ever going to get anybody else onboard. It's gonna be a three to two, no matter what, can you get it under four million? And it's not gonna happen. We had the four, the last election, we had three, two on too much stuff.
Let's hear it. Let's hear it. Trevor, what was that?
Four million is up. The line has been drawn. Number one. Um, number two, I, I understand where you're at on that, Jim, but I just consider the composition of the council. Yeah, I, uh. We added about two hundred thousand here principally and what I was trying to clarify at the beginning of the call was because the previous auction, and I'm calling an auction the deducts, but we all know what I'm saying. Is now included in design and that's the return apron. And there's some puts and takes on the sidewalk and, and other elements of the parking lot. So, uh, it's gone up. It has from the option B, the five point one, which includes, you know, what was in option C previously, the out point, I think around five point three or four.
Five point four, right.
Um. Five point four. And so just, we are, we are now looking at the base design, right, right, which is upgraded from option B to option C. And I just don't, I'm alarmed at the conversation that we're, that we think it's possible that, you know, the bids come back in. Let's review the facts. The construction contingency is not gonna be in the bid. The furniture allowance is not gonna be in the bid. The professional fees are already paid, I believe, will not be in the bid. So it's really a decision, a discussion around what's upon, amount is that we're gonna, we're gonna issue. And I said from the beginning, looking at the sheets and the assumptions therein, three and a half million or below is definitely affordable and an option I feel comfortable with. But if we have the option, if we have the chance to get that from three, three and a half to three and it gets other council members onboard, that's the direction I want to go. I, we're already kind of at the limit with three and a half and I don't want to see us adding things back on last minute that we've kind of worked so hard to. To, to build consensus on. And today's point, I think no doubt it's gonna be in that shape.
Do, are you still, um, interested in, in looking at that return apron to your Third Avenue, Avenue now?
Sure, sure, sure. My, my only point is that these two estimates are not too terrible. Previous option B and this comment tonight are not an apples to apples comparison.
Correct.
In terms of, in terms of, of, of the benefit to the city or the, or the site characteristics, it does now include what was previously an option.
Correct. It would compare more closely to option C. With the.
And then we had the conversation about, about all of the deducts getting from A. And then we had the conversation about, about all of the D-Ducks getting from A to B or C. And I just want to, yeah, clarify my position on that.
So you go, so what I think they're asking is, you'll go back to an option B with an add for return apron.
Yes, yeah. So we, we can, yep, get rid of the brick option, get rid of the glass over a door option, and we can get rid of the messine, build-out option. That's, that's no problem. My only point with all that was that it was already designed, and if you wanted to, if you're interested in the number, we could get it, but if not, that's gone. So consider it gone. And then we'll just restructure it so that the Third Avenue return is an add alternate, so that, you know, that the base bid is the lowest number possible, and then the Third Avenue, um, return, which on Snyder's Boston opinion, you know, is around $47,000. You know, if that holds true, then hopefully that, that looks really attractive on bid day. But that would be broken out separately. Does that sound good? We have consensus on that?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, just putting out getting numbers on the three original D-Ducks. And that, and I don't want to show up to a meeting and argue about that with anybody. It scares all the misery. And just to get some clarification, there's nothing inside the building that we can look at to, uh, to get rid of now? Kind of bring that con a little bit down? Same question I asked last.
Who are you asking that of, the council or not? I think you need to ask your council members back, not their.
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think, Trevor, we kind of been down this road, and I don't, you know, we talked about, um, you know, we discussed a few things last week, but nothing really seemed to, to get traction, um, you know, without, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty simple math equation, right? It's dollars per square foot times square feet. So it'd be a, uh, figuring out what, what other functions to eliminate from the building to have a significant impact. And that, you know, okay. We're happy, yeah, obviously, we're here to serve the city, so we're happy to do whatever it is you want us to do. We just have to have clear direction on that. And, uh, you know, that would take a clear dollar amount that, that is the target, and then that would take a, a contract, unfortunately, another contract resolution, and then, um, you know, time on the schedule to get that done. But that's something we can do, look at.
Merry Christmas.
I think.
You are such a positive person.
I think it, it, at least.
I got too many friends on the fire department that are on my ass three times a week to get this thing done and get it. They've put four years into this design. Every one of them are taxpayers in this town.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You overstocked, okay.
I think my, at least from my perspective, the tax really used to, you know, be nice with the consensus, but, um, to me, there's definitely.
See, what I hear when I hear consensus is, and this is what I've heard across the town, you're not listening to me. You need to vote yes. That's what the consensus is, and that's what it means. In other words, I'm not for 5.1. I wasn't for anything more than three and a half, but I came up to five, or 4.5, but there was no consensus there. No, you're not listening to me. We need consensus. That's the perception. That's the perception around town. That's not just me.
Your consensus is your way or none.
I think this deadline that we've talked about, like the September first going out to bid is.
That's perception.
Top priority for me. That's, as I say, we're ready to talk about the schedule.
We have another meeting on the calendar for August 20th. We'll have a regular meeting next week on the 13th, if there's a reason to need something in between, you know. If you want to share anything, you can let me know, like, Friday, to put it on the agenda, if it's not work session-like. You know, we wouldn't have time for this kind of work session.
Sure.
There's something to share with the council. We should do it then. If you want to go into another session like this, it's 6:30 on the 20th. And then we have a regular meeting on the 27th. And really, the hope was that we have plans and specs, construction documents pretty close at that point.
Right.
Um, I've mentioned to the council in my report, but, um, the other two pieces that need to combine with here somehow is, one is FEMA reapproval, essentially. Um, the Department of Homeland Security for Iowa is bugging us pretty hard to get the new plans so they can submit them to FEMA, and we're hoping to be able to do that concurrently with some of the other work that needs to be done. So as soon as we have what she thought were 90% drawings or something, and.
Right.
For our case, that's site plan.
Yeah.
So, um, we would send them to them and get some idea of how long that will take, hopefully quickly. And then, um, the other person we're talking to is Maggie, um, her about bonding. And as soon as we know kind of the timeline for construction documents and bids, we would start that schedule with Maggie about, um, putting the bonding schedule together. Again, they can go run a little concurrently, but her advice has been not to determine, uh, not to act on the bond issuance until the bid is awarded. But they almost need to be, or let.
Yeah.
Definitely not let. And then, um, she wants the award amount before she bonds.
Okay.
But you want, you want the bonds pretty settled at the time of award so that we have money to pay for the project. So, we have some competing schedules there that we're going to try to all meld together.
So, if there's a general contractor that wants to get in on this bid process, that is, how will that transpire then?
It's all, so it's public bid process. So that means that when, um, when we have the plans and specs ready, that'll come before council, um, for approval of plans and specs. And then, once you guys approve it, next day, we turn around and publish it publicly. So it goes on multiple, all the websites, and you guys need to put it on your website as well. So it goes out to every interested bidding contractor. I mean, we have people looking at it from Arizona and Illinois, even I'm not sure why, because they have to be licensed in Iowa, but it goes, it literally goes out everywhere at that point.
Plan rooms, right?
Yeah, plan rooms.
It comes, this web portal for plan sets. And so if you have people, we've been encouraging.
What we have is a citizen with, uh, within this town that does business with a lot of general contractors that came to me and told me that he has three GCs that are interested, and he supplied me their names. So.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
And we could.
I have talked to some too, and I've encouraged them, one, to call, it's online, but they'll know, we'll make sure they know when the plan sets out.
That, that has to be out there for a certain period of time, something like, what, three weeks or something like that? That it has to be public before we can act on it. So there should be more than that.
Right. We, we advocate for four weeks, a four-week bid period for a project of this size.
The other thing that, so for councils' actions, um, it, the plans and specs require a public hearing.
Correct.
So we will have at one meeting setting a public hearing, and the actual plans and specs in the vote at another one. So it's not one and done. One, so that you understand what it is, but also so that the public will have some notice that it's being considered. That also takes another meeting, then, so it's our own issues.
It's good that you meet every other week, not once a month. So that's good. Uh, and then as far as the 20th, unfortunately, Mike and I have a conflict that, that evening, so I don't know if we can move it to the Monday, the 19th? Our next, our next work session? You guys have availability?
Right now, I won't show anything.
I'm good. Trevor? I think I find it this time. I'm looking now.
I do still want to kind of get back to the colored drawing and make sure, you know, make sure we have clear direction of what, what to tell Snyder.
So it sounds like we would move the meeting from the 20th to the 19th then? Any objections? Call it the 19th.
Do you want to go back to this?
Yeah, definitely.
So what do you think the decision is up for council? That you kind of need to.
Sure. So I think just kind of working down the list, and, um, you know, of what to include or not to include. So the, the sidewalk in red for 5,500 dollars, that is added from the 5.1 we talked about initially. I think there are strong benefits to having a sidewalk to, to the front door. Is that something that we want to include in the, include in the design moving forward, or is that something that's not seen as adding value?
I see the value in, in the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't think that's a material increase. I'm, I'm okay with it. And then to clarify now, the orange and the yellow are kind of an either/or situation?
The orange and the yellow aren't together, actually.
So if, okay, I get, I get what you're saying. So if, if.
If we do the yellow, we have to do the orange.
Return apron.
And the council's already asked for that to be an add alternative.
Correct.
So that's the right kind of step.
So Trevor, just, just to make sure I'm making myself clear. So the reason there's orange and yellow in the same kind of category, the, that D-Duck alternate two, so the yellow portions are things that, um, basically, if, if the Third Avenue return doesn't get done, then that triggers.
The orange.
Triggers the orange. And really, I think the, the drop box should have been orange. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the drop box.
Yeah, the drop box should.
If, if, if we don't do the yellow, then we can leave the orange alone. But if we do do the, if we don't do the yellow, then we have to do the orange to get the trucks around.
That's correct. And that's, that's kind of spelled out if you kind of go line by line under that D-Duck alternate two. So you can see the items in, you know, parentheses are obviously the D-Ducks, but then there is some, essentially what they're acknowledging is that there is still some added cost back in to relocate the drop box, and to drop that curb, pave, do a little bit of pavement, do a little bit of sidewalk.
You're recommending number three that goes away.
Right. So, yeah. Do I have consensus on, on the green parking? Um, not pursuing that any further?
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Excellent. And then the fourth is maintaining the existing, that blue, maintaining the existing entry paving. So again, that's a six-inch paving instead of, um, removing it and replacing it with eight-inch paving in that area.
And that takes out almost 34,000?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So leave, leave the blue in there?
In. So hold on a minute. It wasn't, wasn't four and three going to work together as well? Cause, cause if you maintain the existing east entrance, do you lose that parking?
No, I think, I think what they were doing in this design was, um, just incorporating the existing into that new parking area. So if you can imagine, if you will, you'll come in to that new parking area, but you're going to see, you're going to see the outline of what's there today, because that actual physical paving in the middle.
The blue is what's there now, right now, and that's where we're going in, and just leaving that alone, and then adding to that with six-inch concrete for parking over there.
Right.
And, which is going to be okay unless the trucks try to come in that way, because it's easy to get around to the other side for the drive-throughs, and then, uh, concrete isn't going to stand up to the weight. That's going to be the same thing if we try to come in on Third Avenue and come in from the north on there. That's all six-inch concrete now too, so that's.
And Al, your point with your drawing was just to clean that up. How is the same parking is used?
Right. And, and yeah, my, my doodle on the other sheet was an attempt to try to save even more money and not introduce as much new paving to get close to the same number of parking stalls. So I would kind of say that is, that's a D-Duck alternate five, if you will. But I think kind of to circle back, Trevor, to your point, um, yeah, the, the idea, the idea behind paving the east entry all in eight-inch pavement ties in, if you don't have the, the Third Avenue return that's eight-inch pavement, then it would be advisable to at least get one entry that's eight-inch pavement. But that comes at a cost, and if, if that cost is too much, we could back off $33,000 from that and leave that six-inch pavement.
Then we're going to be like that 25 foot we didn't put on the water cow. We need it now.
So, if, if we don't do the, if we don't do the return apron, don't we need eight-inch pavement somewhere?
I would say it's advisable, um, but the, the rest of the existing parking lot's six-inch, so you would be basically coming onto a stretch of eight-inch pavement where it's dark gray, and then where it's white, you'd be back on a six, and then you'd be, then come back on to eight-inch, again, behind the station where entrance dark gray again. And so there's.
Yeah, I guess we're paying for the, we're paying for return apron by, another way to look at this is we're paying for return apron by keeping that second half entrance intact, or as it is.
Right, right. It does go a long ways to offsetting the, the cost of the third half entry.
It's like 34 to 47.
Mm-hmm. It really makes that third half entry only about.
$10,000.
Yeah, 14 or so.
The convenience of that.
Alone.
Yeah.
Massive.
Well, not only the convenience, but the perception for the truck drivers are kind of. And if we do, if we do do that eight there, then you're still going to have that stretch of six that's white.
Right.
That's going to, unless we tear that up and do that, and eight all the way to the gray, if we would do that and bring that around to there, but not tearing that up, you're going to have more than the, than the Third Avenue approach.
Councilor Dersky, did you?
Yeah, Al, the bid, the design here just on that second half entrance, does that run into the, the carve-out there? Or is it that little notch into the existing parking lot to make space for the building to move to the west? Does that, does that terminate right there, or will that flow through to the main lot?
It flows through, um, it's, it's essentially a, a straight shot east to west into the main lot. And then, uh, essentially requires the, the kind of current center bay of parking in the existing lot to, to shrink up. You lose some stalls there so that the apparats can make that turn down to the back of the fire station.
Really, you're headed west, you're going to curve a little bit south, but then you got to curve. got to curve right back north to come around the building there. And you're actually going to be going through where it says the remove island, that's going to be the, the driveway where the printing and stuff is, it's going to weave.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, I'll read you quick, just, because I don't want to belabor the point, but it sounds like the base includes the return apron, which allows the items in orange to remain in place. And under that scenario, we would also base the, the light blue or the, you know, the existing interest entrance to the east would remain as is, or we would maximize as much we can use as possible. I just want to, if we don't, like, if we don't do the return apron, then I think that we're less thinking about the parking lot. Sorry, Al, can you review real quick for me on the six inches versus the eight inches? It's not, we're not talking structural failure, we're just talking increased wear.
Right, yeah. A potential for a, for a shorter longevity, shorter lifespan, depending, depending on kind of thing.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good with the base being the return apron, and then we, we keep the entrance to the east existing in the base.
Okay.
And then just kind of an effort to finance the return apron.
Right.
What was the concrete on the old, where they used to come out? Was it eight inch or was it, um, six inches? Because obviously, the rule changed all these, you know, all the years. What was it, what did that, the old, old place?
There was no concrete at the old place, it was rock.
There was a, there was an apron.
There was an apron, there was an eight-inch apron, but that was only the.
Twenty feet.
Twenty foot, yeah, it wasn't there. The rest of it was all ground, was seal coat.
Did I understand Trevor saying he wants, you want the return apron as the base bid?
Is that what we were talking about? Or that, and that's what he asked me shows, I guess.
It does now. Yeah, it does now. And if you, I mean, I hear what you're saying is, are you, are you literally right now saying, you know what, keep the blue, keep the existing concrete on the right-hand side of the page, and plan for the return apron on the left?
I guess it just depends on what's we're calling the, the base or the no. You know, what's our base idea, and then what's our option idea?
Well, when I.
Either way, I think we want to see the option.
Yeah, but I think we need to give clear direction to Solomon, that do we want the, because I don't think, I don't think it's going to be very clear if, if the blue becomes a, if you do this, then you have to do this over here, and it's, I think it gets confusing then.
It does, yes.
And it, and it, not for the, I mean, the contractor should probably navigate it, but I don't know that we.
I'm sure I can.
Yeah.
Let's, I mean, I'll try it here. Obviously, cost and, and final bid is a factor, a significant factor in everything we're considering here. And Al, we would like, in a perfect world, to have a return apron.
Right.
But we want to know how much that return apron is going to cost us.
Right.
And if it's too expensive, we want the flexibility not be able to do it. And so you, you tell me what's the best way to take this to market?
I think, I think we just leave the, the blue in as a cost savings. Just leave the, the six-inch paving as is. I think we could entertain the idea of having that six-inch replaced with eight-inch if you don't do the return apron from Third. But I do think that gets complicated and messy. I think that will get missed on bid day and create even more confusion. And I think that, you know, hopefully, leaving the six-inch paving does help you obtain the, the return apron.
Do you think that?
I think that's one big challenge to decide one way or the other.
If we don't do the return apron to Third Avenue, won't the trucks come in on Third Avenue in the existing entry anyway? Because we're taking out the island for the drop box, so I guess, you know, I don't go, they could go both ways. Because it, that seems like a more direct path to me than coming in on Second through the blue and then like weaving around.
But if they do that, it's called six-inch, and it's going to wear.
But if they, but they're coming in on six-inch on, off the Third anyway, I guess is my point. So will they even use this new entrance? Are they going to use our six-inch?
They, I don't, I think they've been, could use either one. It will be set up so that they can come from either direction.
Right, right.
And neither one would have eight-inch concrete for the island.
Yeah.
So it's probably not a big difference on this.
Right.
If we do do the eight-inch, I think they would put forth the effort to try to use that as opposed to the other one. Plus, it's going to give them less turning and stuff. I mean, they, they're coming off a park bridge, it's a little bit longer there, but it isn't the curves and stuff going through that would be coming out of the existing one.
If you built a return apron at eight inches, you literally could say, we want you to keep the trucks.
Yeah, of course, if we do the.
Fire truck access only, you know, with the Third Avenue turn drive, you'd sign that. Yeah, nobody else.
Nobody else, but also, we don't want the fire trucks coming through on the six-inch concrete if you build eight-inch concrete for it.
Guarantee you, they would not want to come through the parking lot if they could.
Yeah, this is a lot easier anyway.
Make clear, bro.
It's, it's really simple, it's, it really looks costly.
So, so we're just going to keep number four leaves the blue.
Right.
Use the, the fourth one is, or the number two becomes an add alternate.
So sidewalk, yes. Add alternate for the.
Yes.
Third Avenue return drive. And then, don't do the green parking. And do not remove and replace the blue paving, leave the six-inch paving as is. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody.
All right, and we'll meet on the 19th. Are we, in your opinion, are we going to be able to meet the deadline that we set for? If we wait until the 19th, to me, I realize you have a lot of work to do, but is that going to give us enough time to?
I will, we'll give Snyder this direction immediately so that they have it first thing tomorrow morning, and that, I mean, that's still, the first, that's still three weeks from now. So as long as they're able to make good progress, and the 19th is essentially them presenting where they're at as a check to you guys, but hopefully without decisions, hopefully it's just more of a, we're halfway through our drawings and here's the update, then yes, I think the first would still be obtainable. I think if, if, and I'm speaking on their behalf without them here, without checking with them, but I, I believe that should still be obtainable. If we get to the 19th and there's still, you know, there's questions and, and things that aren't resolved, then I would say that's probably going to get pushed back a little bit. But we're going to certainly, we've been working on this with you guys for a long time and have every intention of wrapping this thing up so you can put it out on the streets. So that's, that's our every intent.
All right. The 19th, six-thirty PM.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Our next item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and second, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The votes saying aye. I encourage the citizens to go out and review the video that was when we approved Solomon for the bid, and it'll tell you exactly what was said in that meeting. So I want to get clarity on the vote for the adjournment. Mr. Councilor Bell, is your vote on that?
Vote for what?
For the adjournment. I, I heard an aye, and I said a pose, and then I heard another aye, so just wanted to make sure that was not timing. So we did vote to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody.